So I am going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum of the board. I believe we have a few members who may not be with us yet. So I am going to start with a roll call of the of the board. So I'm going to go down my list. Kim Gleason, are you with us yet? Oh, I see Kim is joining us. Hey, good morning, Kim.
Good morning.
Excellent. So we're just starting with a roll call. So your timing was impeccable because you were first on the list.
Perfect. Kim Gleason Essex.
Excellent. Lyle Jepson.
Lyle Jepson Rutland.
Excellent. Kathy Lavoy. Don't see Kathy with us yet. Tom Lovett.
Tom Lovett Waterford.
Excellent. Jenna O'Farrell.
Jenna O'Farrell St. Johnsbury.
And this is Oliver Olson. I'm the Chair of the Board. Angelita.
Angelita Peña, student rep for Bristol.
Jennifer Samuelson.
Good morning, Jennifer Samuelson Winhall.
And Dan French.
Dan French, Secretary of Education.
Excellent. Thank you. So I'll start off with check with members of the board if there are any amendments to the agenda. I do have one slight change, but I want to see if anybody else has any suggested amendments. Okay, I'm not hearing any. So item I on the agenda, the secretary and I did speak, and for a variety of reasons, we're going to postpone, absent objection, we're going to postpone this agenda item to the August meeting. So with that, that takes us to, it's 8:35 right now, that takes us to the public comment section. So I want to start out, I heard several members of the public, so I want to first ask members of the public to identify themselves, not to speak just yet, but just identify yourselves so I can get a sense of how many people we have on the line with us. And then we will, based on how many people we have online, I will allocate time to members of the public to address the board. So if you're a member of the public, if you could identify yourself, we'll do our best to minimize the crosstalk.
Betsy Rich.
Okay, I have Betsy Rich.
Yes.
Okay, I got you. Who next, please?
Andrea Altman.
Andrea Altman. Next.
Jenna Barnaby.
Jenna Barnaby. Okay, next.
Amy Hornglass.
Amy Hornglass. Next. I'm not.
Heather Rice.
I'm sorry, something Rice?
Heather Rice.
Heather Rice. Next.
Frank Zilka.
Frank, I missed your surname, sir.
Z is zebra, I L K A.
Zilka, okay. All righty, next.
Dana Katz.
Dana Katz, okay. Next.
Jennifer Silpe Katz.
Okay. Jennifer, and I heard Katz, but what was before Katz?
Silpe S I L P E hyphen Katz, K A T Z.
Okay, gotcha. All righty, next. Next. I'm not hearing anybody else.
Hi, this is Jennifer Stella.
Okay, Jennifer.
Stella S T E L L A.
Okay, excellent. Jennifer Stella, anyone else? All righty, I'm not hearing anyone else. So we do have nine members of the public who wish to address the board, which is a rather large number, more than we typically see. And we don't have a lot of time allocated for public comments. So I'm going to allocate one minute for each person to speak. And if you have any additional comments, I would strongly encourage you to submit them in writing to the board. I would like to ensure that we provide priority to folks who are looking to address a topic that's on today's agenda. So I, anybody who wishes to address a topic on the agenda, I would ask those individuals to speak first. And anybody who wishes to address a topic that is not on the agenda may continue after that. So before, and I'll take the folks in order that I took their names down, I'll call on you individually. But before I do that, I do want to see, are there any individuals who wish to address a topic that's on today's agenda? I'm not.
I have a question about today's agenda in that it said that there was public comment period for the ARP-ESR. And so I looked on previous agendas where you've discussed that. And I thought that I had seen that on today's agenda, and I know that it had been revised. So I'm just not sure about that.
Yeah, I'm not seeing the public comment on that that topic. Which top, which agenda item are you referring to?
Well, the American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Funds, there is public comment that was allowed. And I saw on previous agendas that there were pieces that were being worked on. And even on this agenda, I thought there had been something about moving forward with the Phase 1, 2, 3 of the reopening of schools.
Yeah, I'm not seeing any, we don't have anything on our agenda on that topic. So I'm sorry, just in the interest of time, because we are, we are crunched for time, I'm not hearing from anybody who wishes to address. I just wanted to make sure that we were providing time for people who want to address an agenda item. It doesn't, I'm not hearing any.
This is Jennifer Stella.
Yes.
Yes, I have, I would like to address the recovery plan, please. I think that is all on the agenda, the recovery work in education. It's basically pertaining to Secretary French's.
Okay.
Updates a little bit backwards, because we're all interested in what the secretary has to say, but we haven't really had the chance to hear what the work that's been done. So we do have an interest in the the work, the important work that this board is doing. But we, I personally have a comment, I think that is relevant to the recovery work and what the board is doing moving forward.
Okay. Any, anyone else? Okay, we'll start with Jennifer Stella then, and then we'll go down with the remaining names and the order that they were given. So Ms. Stella, you have one minute, please.
Okay, that's a tall order, but I'll just at least introduce myself. I've got two children in the Vermont school system. They've attended all of the great options here in Vermont, and our communities have to offer. They've been homeschooled, they've been to public schools, they've been to independent schools, you know, already in their short lives. And my husband and I chose Vermont more than 20 years ago, because it's really a great place to raise a family. It's got a vibrant, natural health oriented community, and lots of outdoor activities that we all love, and great schools. So I know you all agree with that, because you're all here too. And I just wanted to thank you for dedicating your time and energy serving on the Board of Education, being teachers, serving as secretaries. And I know that you, like us parents, really do want the best education possible for our kids. So I guess I'm worried about the recovery plan, because it really does seem like we, as parents, don't really have any area where we can join this conversation. And I want to recognize that, you know, last year was a really difficult year, and I thank everyone for their hard work. So I'll cut to the chase, though. You know, our kids really want to be back in school, and I know this recovery plan is to get them there. But I, I, like many people, are extremely concerned about the high focus on listening to the CDC and following specific mitigation strategies. I was horrified.
Ms. Stella, sorry, your time is up. So I need to move to the next member of the public.
Oh.
But I wouldn't.
Shall I finish my sentence at least?
You're actually over time. If you wouldn't mind submitting your comments in writing, that's probably going to be very helpful to the board.
Okay, I'll just conclude to say that, you know, basically, the CDC does not speak for me. And I would like for us to have a clear direction from the board as to where parents can join this discussion as to what they, what will be going on in the fall with our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Betsy Rich, please.
I hope you can hear me. I can barely hear you.
We can, we can hear you. One minute, please.
Great. State-sponsored health mandates just have no place inside our school walls or anywhere on our campuses. School's a place for teaching our children and young people. Strategies becoming lifelong learners. The, the business about recommending mitigation measures, that should be left up to employees and to families to decide. Research shows that masks don't work, the spread of, they don't stop the spread of disease, and they do harm our children. If you'd like to do your due diligence in that, you can check out the Vermont Mask Survey. I know Amy Hornglass is on the call today, but it's vtmasksurvey.com, and you'll see the evidence of the health risks from masks. The state really should not be promoting vaccines of any kind, but least of all products that have emergency use, reuse authorization only. Those things need to be decided between physicians and consumers. Our State Board of Education just has no business in this arena. Please understand, I, like Jennifer, do not consent to the mitigation standards considered for implementation. I don't accept to live by what the CDC decrees. And I make decisions about my health care and the welfare of my children and their health care. And honestly, I will hold you accountable to injuries to my child due to your mandates. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Andrea Altman, please.
Yes, hi. I am calling in regards to the American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Funds. And I also would like to know when there would be a forum for parents to give feedback. Clearly, on that plan, it states that there are stakeholders that are involved, a diverse range of stakeholders. And what I wanted to ask you all is, who are those stakeholders? How is diverse defined? And there are lots of different mitigation strategies that are proposed in that plan. And I'm wondering why there isn't a focus on prevention and health, like encouraging vitamin D levels and things like that, asking whether or not people could be tested for COVID antibodies. It seems to me that it's much more of a treatment type of strategy. And as Ben Benjamin stated, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. So please let us know how and when we can get involved as concerned stakeholders into commenting on the ARP-ESR plan.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Altman. Next is Jenna. You have one minute, please.
Jenna Barnaby. Simply put, the CDC, AAP, and Dr. Fauci are in conflict over masking. Add to this thousands of deaths and adverse reports after getting the COVID-19 shot. Remember, too, the incentivizing and pressure to taking the shot in order to help others, limiting activities for those who are not getting the shot, trying to fit in, and failing to acknowledge those who have been asymptomatic and/or recovered. Therefore, Vermont's Agency and Department of Education should not recommend any mitigation measures for schools, and instead reserve any mitigation measures at the discretion of the individual employees and the students' parents. Just a couple reminders. I also emailed this to you, 11 reasons, but here are a couple. 80% or more of eligible Vermonters have taken the shot, 100% of Vermont youth have recovered from COVID, 99.99% recovery rate for children in the United States. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jenna. Next is Amy Hornglass. You have one minute, please.
Yes, thank you. I did submit a letter that outlines the evidence that masks cause all kinds of harms. Also, the lack of evidence that they provide any benefits and suggestions for your board, that you not only begin collecting data and looking at the data that I'm sure you already have about these harms, but also conduct a fair cost benefit analysis of their use in schools. I provided a slideshow, which people can find at vtmasksurvey.com, that I was going to present to you today. I shortened it as much as I could, down to the indisputable biology of the situation we're dealing with, the oxygen and carbon dioxide exchange that needs to be happening all the time for healthy functioning of our bodies. It's just basic biology. I include evidence from the CDC and OSHA on that. And the CDC basically has no quality evidence of safety of the use of masks for anybody. But especially if we look at children, they have one study that they cite for evidence of safety. And I put that in the slideshow. If you want to just do a quick review of the evidence, the, the study actually does not prove safety. It actually proves harm.
Ms. Hornglass, you're, you're actually over, over time. So we do have your presentation.
I welcome the opportunity to work with you on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Heather Rice. You have one minute, please.
Yes, I am a chiropractic physician in the state of Vermont and a mother. And last year, I had the personal experience of having my child in school and being harmed by a mask use. And what was astonishing to me as a doctor is how everyone was pretending that the masks had no impact. And in the end, it was very unsatisfactory, the way things were handled. And everyone kept defaulting to, this is what the Board of Department of Public Health says, this is what the CDC says. I even had personal conversations with the Department of Public Health. And there actually were solutions, and the schools would not accommodate those solutions. And so it's very frustrating for parents, let alone doctors watching people being harmed by these mitigation procedures. And I think it needs to be looked at very closely moving forward, because we are destroying the health of our kids at the same time that we're trying to protect that health. And we have to look closely at that risk benefit analysis. And kids, as Artigan mentioned, have such a low rate of danger with this pandemic. And the transmission also has been shown not to be happening. So.
Ms. Rice, sorry, you're, you're, you're over time. Thank you for your comment. And again, I would encourage you to submit any further comment in, in writing to the board. Frank Zilka, you have one minute, please. Mr. Zilka?
Can you hear me okay? Good morning.
Yes, we can.
My name is Frank Zilka. I'm the parent of a UVM senior. And up until last week, we were told that it would not be requiring vaccinations until it was an approved FDA drug. Obviously, at this point in time, it's experimental. My son had COVID. He has the antibodies in his body. Our doctor has advised us not against getting the shot until the antibodies are out of his body, so that we don't overload him. I come to you as the Board of Trustees, because the Board of Trustees is using guidance from the State Board of Education. And I would like you to look further into this and give us some guidance on this, as I do think that there's a number of ailments that go along with these shots that have to be addressed. I'm also concerned the Board of Trustees wants the student body to be vaccinated. However, they've not forced the faculty be, to be vaccinated. There's also an OSHA ruling that just came out that said that if you, as an employer, force your employees to get vaccinated, you are liable for any existing diseases or ailments that come from the shot.
Hey, Mr. Mr. Zilka, you're, you're at your time, please. So again, I would encourage you to submit any further comment in writing. Dana Katz, please, you have one minute.
Yeah, hi, this is Jennifer Silpe Katz. I'm the wife of Dana Katz, and she's unable to comment. So I'm going to use her time instead.
Okay.
I, we are mothers of three, well, three kids, two that are in the high school system in Vermont, one that if she attends, will be a sophomore at the University of Vermont. There's a lot of things I want to request, but mostly, I would really request that we find a way to have open, uncensored, honest debates about the subject with doctors and scientists. We are extremely concerned about the worldwide censorship. This is not a political debate. It's not a financial debate. And when it comes to our children and our students in this state and our education system, we are extremely concerned that we've got the population of people with the lowest statistical level of illness or spread, as was shown during the school year with the kids running around with masks under their nose, and there was very little spread. But we've got worldwide censorship, and we've got unknown long-term effects. And why anyone would consider vaccinating this group of people who has a nearly 100% chance for recovery is beyond me. And I echo Mr. Zilka's concerns about UVM students. I am deathly afraid of my, my daughter, who is 19, nearly 20 years old, being pressured to get this unknown vaccination. Thank you for your time.
Excellent. Thank you much. And again, that concludes public comment. I did call on all who identified themselves. And I do recognize that we had an unprecedented number of members of the public addressing the board. So the time allocated, obviously, was a bit limited. So I would encourage members of the public to submit any further comment in, in writing to the board. And you'll find contact details on the Agency of Education's website. So with that, I would ask members of the public, you're welcome to, this is a public meeting, you're welcome to remain on the line, to listen to our discussions. But we will not be accepting any public comment elsewhere throughout the meeting. And would ask, if you are remaining on the line, if you could mute yourself. In the past, we've had a lot of disruption and distraction from unmuted lines. So that would be very helpful to us. And perhaps Maureen, if you could go ahead and mute those members of the public as well on our side, that would be helpful. So that brings us to item C on the agenda, which is to administer the oath of office for our rising senior member, rising student member of the board, Angelita Peña. Angelita, I don't see you on this. Oh, there you are. Wonderful. So, so I am, I'm going to read you two separate oaths, and we will ask for your, your confirmation of each of these two oaths. Simply, you just state that you will. So you, Angelita Peña, do solemnly affirm that you will be true and faithful to the state of Vermont, and that you will not directly or indirectly do any act or thing injurious to the Constitution or government thereof, under the pains and penalties of perjury.
I will.
Excellent. You, Angelita Peña, do solemnly affirm that you will faithfully execute the office of member of the State Board of Education, and will therein do equal right and justice to all persons to the best of your judgment and ability according to law, under the pains and penalties of perjury.
I will.
Excellent. Congratulations, and welcome as a fully fledged voting member of the board.
Thank you.
Excellent. Well, that brings us next to the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the prior meeting. Is there any discussion? And would, would anybody care to move the consent agenda, adoption of the consent agenda?
Would entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Excellent. So I'll take that as Mr. Jepson has moved adoption of the consent agenda. Is there a second to that motion? It's been seconded by Kim Gleason. Is there any discussion? Already hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye or yes.
Aye.
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 I would abstain. I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay, so we have one abstention. Any, any, anyone opposed, please signify by saying nay or no. I'm not hearing any opposed. So we had, we've adopted that unanimously, with the exception of one abstention from General Farrell. Excellent. So next is item E, board announcements. So I'll open it up for any comments from individual board members. I'm not hearing anybody. Quiet group this morning. All righty, Angelita, that brings us to you for your student report.
Yep, thank you. So weird being the only one. So I really don't have anything exciting to update. School's out. The only thing I can really do is reiterate the points that we made last time. There is some concern with teachers and students just about how we're not, we're not leaning back into a schedule. We're just going to go right back in full force, and how educating students in different classrooms and smaller groups was very difficult. And now we're going back to bigger environment. So I can speak for myself as well. It's very stressful thinking how I'm going to go from a class to seven back to 15. So, and how teachers will handle that as well will be very interesting. And then I reached out to Sabina, and we had a conversation about, you know, what we would like to bring, what would we like to see brought to the board. And we, Sabina mostly did a lot of work with coronavirus, the survey, and then mental health. And I think it'd be very interesting to bring a more positive light to what we learned from this. You know, I think something we learned is who's definitely an individual learner and who isn't. So I'd like to kind of find a way, if I can, to bring information to you guys of what students learned about themselves, and the changes they would like to see that benefited them during COVID happen more often in school. There was that conversation about, will we need extensions on the end of the year for snow days? Because now we, teachers know how to use this, and we can do in-person, at-home learning, instead of canceling the day of school. So that's about it. If you guys have any questions, obviously, I can probably answer them. But there's really not a huge update for you guys today.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Any, any questions for Angelita?
Maybe this is, I'm sorry, Jennifer.
Jennifer, and then Lyle, and then Kim, I believe.
I really like the idea of this follow-up survey, because I do think, you know, anecdotally, we've sort of talked about, there have been positive aspects to learning that occurred with COVID. And I think, you know, we're still sort of coming out of this. So it's kind of hard to know really what those things are, and what we could, you know, what, what positive things we could carry forward. That may be a tall order. But I do like the positive focus, because although there were many trials that occurred, you know, during the last year for students, teachers, and, you know, everybody, I think there are good things that came out of it. And it would be good to, you know, take whatever we can glean from this and move forward. So I appreciate the focus.
Yeah.
Excellent. Lyle?
I'm just going to say ditto to Jennifer Samuelson's note. Also, just a question, maybe this is for Secretary French. I'm assuming that all sporting practices and other events, summer camps are all starting on time, happening on time as pre-COVID, with pre-COVID dates?
Yeah, in terms of summer, I mean, there's been a significant expansion of summer activities through what we call the Summer Matters campaign. So federal dollars were been brought to bear to expand access for students this summer. So we've been really putting a lot of emphasis on reconnecting with kids and making sure they had something proactive to do this summer. In terms of athletics, if you're speaking to like the schedules of practices and so forth, you know, as far as I know, those things usually, particularly with like football kicking in August, we are working on, you know, the mitigation slash operating guidance for the fall for schools. But that so far hasn't had any impact on any kind of deadlines or dates when practices are starting and so forth.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Kim? Oh, you're muted.
Sorry. I love that idea, Angelita, as well. And I'd love to support you and help you in any way I can. I was thinking as well, you all had developed a student, sort of, network of contact information. And I know that students graduate and move on. And so I wonder if we can add to your list of thoughts and thinking how we try and keep that contact network updated year over year and as you pass it on to the next person as well. So I'm happy to support and brainstorm with you ways to do that and maybe outreach to the VPA to get to every high school and every middle school. But thank you so much.
Excellent. Thanks again, Angelita. It's very exciting to learn about that. Alrighty, so that brings us to item G, Secretary French, if you could provide us with your update. And if you wouldn't mind, there, some of the public comment referenced the opportunity for public comment on the state's response to the ARPA plan. So if, to the extent that you are able to provide a bit of information on that, that would be helpful.
Yeah, thanks. Good morning. Yes, I had planned to provide an update on the recovery. And really speaking to the ESER plan, that is a federal requirement. So I just wanted to point out to you that this plan has been posted for public comment. It's on our website. Actually, if you go to the AOE website, it's prominently featured and right on the front page. And you can go in there and if members of the public or the board wish to provide commentary on that, there's a link there to do that. And let me just qualify this a little bit. You know, Vermont, by any measure, had a very successful response to the pandemic in terms of the public health statistics. And in our education system, equally successful, we were very successful in acting significant amount of in-person learning. And we contemplated what we call recovery. We were starting to plan for the sort of like post-pandemic environment as early as last January. And then the federal government, you know, as I say, throughout the pandemic has been critical in providing funding to help manage a pandemic. But, and largely in education, that was done through this program called ESER, the Elementary Secondary Education Emergency Relief Program. And the third installment of that funding is, has been done under the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARP. So we call it ARP-ESER. So while we were, as a state, planning for recovery on our, in our own planning sort of process, the federal government, particularly in this third sort of tranche of federal funding and ARP-ESER, also started to point states and districts around the country towards recovery. But it's important to acknowledge, as we bring these things together conceptually, that many places in our country never opened their schools or only opened them on a nominal basis during the pandemic. So there is an emphasis on the ARP-ESER funding to really promote school reopening. And that's, that's not really our situation, you know, because we opened our schools last September. At any rate, the recovery plan requirement is really about how we spend the state dollars. 90% of the funding under ESER is local money that the state does not direct. Our job at the state level is to ensure that the locals spend the money in accordance with federal regulation. But other than that, 90% of these federal dollars go directly to school districts. But the plan is a requirement for how the state spends its share of the funding, which is still fairly significant. It's approximately $50 million in total. And we worked with the legislature to come up with a plan to do that. So essentially, every strategy, if you will, that we're proposing in this plan has been approved already by the General Assembly. And we still are required to go through a planning requirement through the federal government, and that's what's been posted to our website. And the General Assembly, as we worked with them through this process, sort of qualified their approval on us presenting a draft of this plan to the education policy committees by the end of July. So that's going to happen probably as early as next week. So again, this is, this is really about how we spend dollars, the federal dollars, in accordance with the federal regulations. It is really not related to opening schools for this fall or, you know, again, our schools have been open all along, though you will see some investments in areas like making schools safe and healthy and so forth. But at any rate, that's the process for public comment and that's essentially what's in the document. I will say, just to put a little more context on this, when we start thinking about sort of the guidance, if you will, that everyone's got accustomed to, to opening for the, you know, schools and so forth, firstly, I'd point out, just, just a sort of reaction to some of the public comment, I think as the state board members know, you, the state board itself has had no role and no authority over the guidance required to operate schools. So I just sort of mentioned that the state board has no role in that from under statute or regulation. And last year in particular, we were in a state of emergency, as you know, which is its own specific context. So the guidance we were promulgating last year had its authority not in law, but from the governor's emergency order. State of emergency is now over in Vermont. So not only is the state board not involved in this decision-making, but it's really not a state of emergency from that authority perspective. So now it's a conversation for the Health Department and the Agency of Education. And that's, that conversation, as we had planned all along, would pick up in August. So we are hoping to put out some basic guidance. And when I say basic, because we anticipate not needing significant guidance for schools. Again, it's not in a state of emergency and as has been observed, I think everyone's aware, Vermont's operating proceeds environment is significantly different than many other places of the country, unfortunately. Fortunate for us that our operating environment is very good, highest vaccination rate in the country and so forth. And that needs to be factored into our decision-making. So we are working on guidance for the fall. We expect it to be still very nominal, nothing like what we produced last year. We still believe schools in Vermont will operate essentially fully and in-person. And, you know, those deliberations are actively underway with the Health Department and our team of pediatric infectious disease experts at UVM and so forth, the same group we've utilized all along and leaned on all along to develop our guidance. And so that process is underway, but the state board is not involved in that process and the recovery plan isn't the document that describes any of that information. The recovery plan is really about the federal funding requirements that essentially have already been settled by the General Assembly. I will say though, and I've said in a couple other forums, I think it's important, just on a broader policy perspective, to consider how, how we involve student voice and parental voice in our policy development. I was on VPR one morning and really reacting to Angelita and our other former student reps' participation on the state board and saying, you know, that's one of my key takeaways, the secretary from this, this year, is that there needs to be more voice in the policymaking process for both students and parents. So I'm contemplating, this is outside of the conversation of mitigation and recovery, but I am contemplating some formal mechanism to do that as secretary. I think it would be really beneficial for the secretary to have a regular group of parents and students surfacing their, their opinions and perspectives. So why don't I pause there and then I'll talk a little bit about the waiting factors and a little bit on assessment. If there are any questions on recovery or operating schools, so forth?
So I just want to, for the benefit of the public, just want to reinforce Secretary French's earlier point that the, there is an opportunity for public comment. It's on the agency's website. The state board does not own this work and is not actually the proper venue for, for public comment. That is the agency and the secretary, and there is a mechanism for that. So I would strongly recommend that members of the public still with us who had an interest in commenting on this topic, take that opportunity to do so through, through the, through the website. Kim? And then Jen.
Thank you. Thanks. Dan, the one question I have in sort of reflecting on Angelita's thought about do we need to make up snow days at the end of the year? Will we have, we had that leverage and ability to do that where we could plan for it and have it be a remote day. We were able to incorporate that under the, the way we were counting days last year and under the state of emergency and guidance. So as, what role would the state board have in considering waivers? Where, will we be able to let schools know through guidance how they might manage fully remote days in lieu of losing a student day?
Yeah, and we have provided some guidance for them. And the basic theme of that guidance is, you know, the state of emergency is over. So what, you know, again, I think our districts and to a certain extent, the public were conditioned to digest formal guidance, if you will, that had the force of regulation because again, it was a state of emergency and specific authority was delegated to the Secretary of Education and the Commissioner of Health to manage the pandemic. So school, school districts had to follow that guidance as regulation and it also, we had to do some things from a, in that guidance from a regulatory perspective to impart a lot of flexibility on operations, including enabling the use of remote learning. The message, the sort of the message in our approach to the fall, as we put out in April, was that come fall, with no state of emergency, we fall back on our existing regulations and rules. And our existing regulations and rules do not allow for full school remote learning to count as one of the mandatory student attendance days. So effectively, you cannot have a whole school count a remote learning day on a snow day. You know, you have to make it up. Now, the existing regulations speak specifically about certain percentages of the population being present. So it is possible to do remote learning, absolutely, and it's something we encourage under our flexible pathways sort of provision. But this idea of whole school remote learning is not essentially permissible in terms of meeting the statutory requirements on the minimum number of student days. Now that being said, I think you're raising the question of the waiver process, right? So you do have a waiver process that's available, that basically becomes available in the second half of the school year. So traditionally, I'll use the case of pipe bursting. That's a very common scenario. So a school would have a pipe burst in the winter, floods, and it's, it's at a point in the school year where there's only a limited number of vacations, where they could shift to in-person days. So they have limited opportunity to make up the days essentially on their calendar and they would approach the state board for a waiver, meaning that they wouldn't have to make up those days. During the emergency, I asked and the board granted a delegation of that sort of waiver process to me, a secretary. So that was just a piece of a strategy to give us some operational flexibility during the pandemic. But again, now going forward, we fall back on the existing regulations and the existing process. So if a school were to, or a district were to come forward in the second half of the year and request a waiver for the not being able to meet the minimum number of student days, we would review that and then the board would engage in the approval process of a waiver request. But, you know, currently under your existing rules or regulations, a school district is not allowed to have all their students out on remote learning and count it as one of the mandatory days towards minimum number of students being present.
So then I guess our role, if we were to consider that it be one, would be to consider that regulation?
Right. And that's, you know, to the point about lessons learned during the pandemic, there's been a lot of great lessons learned, right? We have to surface those lessons learned and bring those forward to the General Assembly and to the board, you know, through a review, both for statute and regulation. We knew in April that that wasn't anything that we could do in time for the September. So goal one, even now, in retro, looking backwards from April, was to get kids back in school full-time and let's restore the normal processes. As Angelita said, some anxiety about going from seven students in a classroom to 15. We need to address those issues first, but we're very interested in exploring lessons learned and how, how we might enact greater flexibility, particularly for students in the system. So that's, that's work, I think that's out in front of us, probably in January. But it's not something that, specifically on this issue, it's not something that's specifically enabled under the current regulation or law.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer and then Tom?
Yeah, thank you. Dan, first of all, I just wanted to thank you and your team for sort of like shifting sands. And I can imagine like week to week, it's been a tall ask to sort of keep on track with all of the different regulations, the science, you know, the, the rate of growth of the virus. So I very much appreciate the work that you guys have done. I just wanted to clarify, you are planning for an August timeline to sort of let schools know what reopening is going to look like in terms of, you know, masking, not masking. So yeah, if you, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I mean, so what we did, we knew districts need to have a sort of sense of direction back in the spring. So we did sort of put out a statement in the form of a memo from Dr. Levine and myself, basically saying, we expect, you should plan for and you should expect the return to full in-person instruction in the fall. We use the phrase nominal. If mitigation strategies are necessary, they will be nominal, you know, meaning that it's really not going to restrict your space. We don't expect, for example, the use of distancing to the point where we had it enacted last year that really required alterations of physical space and buildings and so forth. But we are, and we've, we've continued as we do all along. I mean, we've, we've maintained a very disciplined approach to consuming health information. And that's, as a cabinet-level team, that's never stopped. So we, we on a regular basis, several times a week, are analyzing international data, you know, national data, regional data, state data, where we consume a lot of information. And it's been an important part of our decision-making and we haven't lost track of that by any means. But as we've done throughout the pandemic, you know, we, that all gets reduced down to a very practical reality of operating Vermont's education system. So we, we understand that Vermont's not an island, so it's important that we, from a public health perspective, I think, consider Vermont's geographic relationship to regional partners that have different dispositions towards the virus and so forth, including Canada. So we have to monitor all those things closely. But then we have to operationalize the guidance in the specific context of Vermont's school system. And that requires an understanding of to what extent people can operationalize very specific requirements. And striking that balance is really important. And I think we, we did a good job last year, and when I say we, it's the whole system. You know, we could, we can create the guidance, but we had a lot of feedback on operational, operationalizing that guidance and that feedback was almost like an hourly basis. So close communication with schools and districts and superintendents and so forth enabled us to sort of navigate all the ups and downs of the crisis and that will remain a feature. But we, we had always planned around August, again, striking a balance between the public health information and the operational needs for planning. On a public health sense, the closer we can get to the beginning of school, the more accurate our understanding in the environment will be. So we've been, you know, putting off, sort of diagnosing the situation from a public health standpoint until we need to. But then on the other end, we need to give enough notice for people to operationalize whatever we're going to request of them or recommend. So that's the balance. So we've always sort of planned August. Again, we're starting to see, as evidenced by the public comment today, but just the national conversation, you know, both, I think from the CDC guidance that came out earlier this summer, then recently the American Academy of Pediatricians. It's important to also note that many schools in the country start much earlier than Vermont. So there are places in the South that are starting very soon. So they need to know, you know, now essentially how they're going to move forward. We do have the luxury of time and I think you'll find in New England in particular, the New England states are kind of moving forward on a very parallel cadence because we, firstly, we're in a much different situation than many other parts of the country. Secondly, we have significant experience in operating our schools throughout the pandemic in significantly worse conditions than we have now. So we, we also have some operational confidence that we know how to do this, where some people are looking at it for the first time, unfortunately. So, I mean, that's the context. We are actively planning, you know, for the fall and we do plan to have something out for schools in the coming weeks.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Dan, you mentioned the Summer Matters program that's, that's going on. And so three things, I wonder if you can talk- And so three things, I wonder if you can talk about what, what's the participation been like across the state? How effective has that been, in your opinion? Do we have data about that? And are there lessons that we've learned from that program that will help us going forward?
Yeah, these are great questions. I don't have full answers for them. I mean, I, you know, as we do all too often, I think in Vermont, we do provide anecdotal sort of observation, like things are going great, right? So I think things have gone exceedingly well. But we did, as we're doing with all these sort of pandemic programs, from the very beginning, we're designing metrics to measure like, you know, did it work or not? Or, you know, what did we learn? So we will have some reporting on this. In particular, our major sort of contractor on this, Vermont After School, has been really cognizant of designing sort of some collection, some data collection points around summer. So we'll, we'll be reporting on all that as, as the programs wind down. I'd be happy to share that information with the board. I think we know, you know, again, Vermont's recovery planning conceptualization sort of predated the federal RPSR kind of ideas. We, in their very general concepts, we focused, we developed three focus areas. One is academics, another is social emotional well-being of students, and the third is what we call engagement. And from a prioritization standpoint, we wanted to put emphasis on engagement, you know, and that's, that's really what was the foundation behind the Summer Matters campaign. That coming out of this, if you can remember, looking back a couple of months from now already, you know, we were anticipating the summer being much more open and, you know, almost say back to normal. And that's, I think, what's transpired. But we really wanted to have students in all regions of the state to have some opportunity to do that engagement. And we, we knew that would be good foundational work to help us with some of the issues, as Alita mentioned, around anxiety and so forth, getting to school. But getting kids back and actively involved, I think, is going to really help the fall go well. And we'll certainly, I think, put increased emphasis on the other two focus areas, the academics and the social emotional well-being. Still keep a context on engagement. And to your question, I think, Tom, we'll, we'll have some data certainly on how the summer went. But we're already planning for an expansion of after-school programming, which is going to sort of be that, another strand of the engagement piece. And it also is a requirement of RPSR that states do that. So we'll, we'll have some feedback on the summer, but we're already actively planning, again, on the fall, knowing that any kind of investment engagement is going to have paid dividends in the other two focus areas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lyle and then Jenna?
Sure. And Dan, thank you for continually building a plane in flight here. So this has been difficult. So well, I'm looking at the, the plan that was recently released and it clearly relies, in my opinion, correct me if I'm wrong, on the CDC guidance emphasizing that the LEAs will do no less than CDC guidance. Is it premature for you to suggest that your guidance will include local control over making more stringent decisions about masking or mitigation efforts, again, that are more stringent than CDC guidance? Or will your direction to schools be more clear and, and direct you will do this with specific expectations?
Yeah, I think, you know, again, it just, it, your question sort of serves as the context of this planning exercise or this federal requirement. Federal government was really saying, we're going to give you this money, but we want you to open your schools, you know? And Vermont, again, had already opened its school. So our, our section of this plan is actually fairly brief because we're able to say, you know, look, we've opened our schools all along. We're not, we're not sitting here in the summer saying, how are we going to open our schools? You know, we, we've done that. Actually, we enacted far more stringent guidance than the CDC recommended ever. And the U.S. Department of Ed essentially issued no guidance until the spring. So we've, we've been operating in an environment, all the New England states, under very stringent guidance requirements, far more than what the federal government required. So that's, that's sort of in the rearview mirror, so to speak. Going forward, you know, I think your question sort of gets at a sort of the style of what we might do or what we might not do. All I'll say at this point is that we're working on it. And we will, I, I, again, I think our decision-making process is really based on having good information and we do, we digest a lot of information and we, I think we have a very solid understanding of the operational environment of Vermont's school system. And, and I would argue a proven track record that we know how to intersect those two and ensure safety of our students. So those factors are being considered by us. We, we do take anything the CDC says as important and we, we spend a lot of time reviewing it. But we very intentionally, when we put out our statement in the spring, we very intentionally said, we're, we're going to follow the recommendations of Department of Health, you know, the Vermont Department of Health. Because at times, we have found the CDC guidance not to be sufficient or not necessarily applicable in an environment, you know, where we have such low positivity rates, even, you know, we were using the positivity rate metric throughout the pandemic. There were states in our region that were saying, oh, we'll reopen schools when the positivity rate drops to 5%. Well, Vermont was at 1%, you know, and we were having the same sort of conversation. So the CDC never really had much to say about states that operate in conditions like Vermont because Vermont was the only state operating in those conditions essentially. So we have, we have to be very cognizant of what the public health expertise is. But when we consider operationalizing that, it is a function of looking at the specific public health conditions in Vermont and how confident we are that we have good testing. I mean, we also have very robust testing. We have a really good understanding of how the virus is behaving in our state. But then the other side of that is to understand how, how Vermont school districts can operationalize any public health guidance and recommendations that we produce. And again, we have a very tight-knit system in that regard and it's proven itself. So it remains to be seen, to your specific question about what the guidance will be, but people should have confidence that we'll, we'll do the right thing relative to ensuring the safety of our schools.
Quick follow-up, if I may, Oliver. And I may have missed the timeline here that I'm, I'm looking for it now. But I just know on a personal side that my spouse is waiting for some guidance and she is a guidance coordinator who then will have to change her schedule if something comes out different than what she expects. So is there a particular timeline that schools can expect to get that I've missed here, looking rapidly through this? Is there a particular timeline they can expect? Fully understanding that the longer you wait, quite frankly, the better because you have more information. But schools are, I know, anxious.
No, again, we, we, I think, have a conceptualization that the guidance, anything we produce is going to be nominal, right? So we'll keep using that phrase. So therefore, isn't going to require two months of operational deliberation at the local level to enact as it did last summer. You know, and that was part of the pressure, just to draw a distinction, last summer, if we had nine months to design, you know, a COVID mitigation plan for a disease of which we had no information on, you know, last summer, we had a couple of weeks to do that and also to intersect that with giving people enough time to operationalize whatever we were going to put out. So totally different animal than last summer. So we do expect, I would say, August, I would say early August, but we're going to, we're going to do it right. And we don't want to have to change it two weeks later, right? And so that's, that's the other point we've made throughout the pandemic. We try to make minimal amount of changes to the guidance so it can survive, you know, and serve everyone pretty well. But soon, August will be here soon.
Thank you.
Jenna?
Thanks. I have a comment question around the Summer Matters programs. So first of all, I've looked at a variety of them, the offerings statewide, and our friends at Vermont After School have certainly done an amazing job, not only organizing and helping schools with structure, but the offerings that are happening are incredible. They are high interest, participatory, experiential learning, small group. Their environments and offerings, high interest, like that kids would like totally love to do. And it would be great to see those linkages in the classroom in the fall, too, because I think we've taken kids on this journey around their learning and to have them have these summer opportunities, which don't necessarily always transfer into the classroom. And we know that when kids are in enriching after-school programs, there's lots of data around how well they're doing there and what their connection is to their school. So it would be great to be able to do that. Second of all, my question is from this, a lot of these programs are staffed by teachers. So teachers, often administrators, I know, and peer educators are working in Summer Matters programs. So I wonder about the support that they're going to receive entering into their classroom when they really haven't been, had the opportunity to kind of take a break this summer because they've been going right through. And, you know, I know it's hard, the workforce is really challenging right now to employ people. And we are staffing these programs with our, with our current teachers. So I don't know from the agency, is there some recognition for teachers that is planned for the fall?
Yeah, I don't have a recognition per se, but I, I would say that, you know, we, we designed Summer Matters on the assumption that we could not rely on school labor to manage and expand the system. So as much as teachers are involved in many of the programs, and particularly the 21C programs, a large number, if not the majority of the programs, are not dependent on labor from schools because that labor is exhausted, right? So to your point. But yeah, I mean, anyone who's working in these programs is doing so on a voluntary basis. And we do, I think, have built in and we've, we sort of downshifted at the agency based on the assumption that districts would also downshift a little bit. I said, you know, slow down post-pandemic and get some time off. And I've seen those patterns enacted. But you're right. I mean, the labor force issue is a big issue. It's, I think people are starting to acknowledge it's not just an education issue. It's, you know, go to any restaurant today and see what, you know, what's going on in terms of waitstaff and help and their hours and so forth. And you will see in the RPSR, a federal requirement in our plan is to do some analysis of specifically the education workforce. So that is a federal requirement and it's one we've worked on a bit already as a state, but we've also worked on it regionally, which I think is important because we do have a regional labor market essentially in Vermont. So I'll, I agree with your observations. It remains to be seen, but I'm hoping everyone took some time off. And, you know, it's, it's been a great summer. I think we'll find the data to Tom's question. It's been, it's been a great investment, I think, and it will pay off significantly in the fall. But, you know, the issues of staff, particularly staff availability, but also staff morale and motivation are ones we're going to need to attend to significantly inside the profession. And hopefully, we'll, we'll get at some of those through our, our workforce analysis that's built into our plan.
Great. Thank you. A question for you, Dan, are you, does the agency have any data around vaccination rates of staff on a school-by-school basis? And if so, is there a plan to publish that information?
We do not. It conceivably could be done, but, you know, as we were rolling out vaccination at the state level, you know, that, that was done, you know, it's protected health information, so to speak. So employers were not, you know, given any information relative to the vaccination status of, of their education workforce. When I say we could, we could probably try to pull something together because we also, because we were involved logistically in deploying those vaccination clinics, we kind of know, you know, kind of what the rates might be. I think it would be challenging to go down to the individual level. But these, these questions of, you know, employers being able to understand whether their employees are vaccinated or not are ones that are still sort of being worked out and legally will continue to be worked out. But we do, we have a pretty high confidence level that over 80% of Vermont educators are vaccinated at this point. But we don't have a school-by-school basis of reporting that easily, though we could probably work on it.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just wondering, because obviously the corollary is the, the data that is managed around student vaccination rates in, in schools for, for other, you know, immunization types. So.
Yeah, and I think, you know, to your point, it's, I mean, this is me, my, my sort of public health degree speaking here, so I'll take it with a grain of salt. But we have, we, we know, we have a high degree of vaccination in the state of Vermont, you know? So it's not so much about individuals being vaccinated, it's the impact of that collective high rate on the ability of the virus to spread in our state. So with a high, once you get over into that high rate, it's really hard for the virus to spread. So therefore, you protect the people that are not vaccinated, meaning particularly the younger students. So that's, that's part of the dynamic that factors into our decision-making, particularly with vaccines that are authorized under emergency use. So we have to, we have to sort of do that analysis. But it's important to acknowledge that, you know, you can't, I would say, you know, again, as my, my unqualified public health sort of expertise, you can't necessarily draw a direct correlation between a vaccination rate of a school building, for example, and the relative health and safety of that building. It's really about what is the degree of suppression of the virus that we see broadly represented in a community or a region, which is no doubt directly impact, is directly impacted by the rate of vaccination. So that those, all those kinds of dynamics need to be factored into our decision-making.
Good. So I think that takes us, or takes you back to your report on the task force.
Yeah, we're just real quick on that. I think, I think Oliver mentioned last time that this is a very important activity and I just wanted to speak to it a bit. I've, I've been invited to testify at the task force. They tried to organize a meeting, I think shortly after the Fourth of July, but available, somewhere in that timeframe, the availability was hard. So the, the real first meeting for me in terms of participation is the 29th, which is next week, I believe. So there, from my perspective, I did talk to one of the chairs, Senator Hardy. It sounded like they're still getting organized, but I think this next meeting will be them sort of digging in and getting some foundational information, both on the waiting study and on the current construction of the funding, education funding system in Vermont. So I just, you know, I just surfaced this as a topic of interest to you. I think there's a lot of, a lot of topics related to the waiting study that have direct relation to the work of the board and ones you, I think, under the statute, you are required to sort of be consulted or brought along in that process, but you might want to spend some focus time following those deliberations.
Yes. So in fact, I did review the, the meeting of the, from June, I think it was June 29th, their, their initial meeting. So I did have a chance to review that. I know Jennifer Samuelson's been in contact with one of the co-chairs and, and we have, we, as you mentioned, we are required to provide input as part of that, part of that process. And they have extended an invitation. So we actually, when we get to item K as a board, we'll have some discussion about how, what kind of input we want to provide. And Jennifer and/or I will testify on behalf of, of the board. So we'll be looking for input from the board when we get to item K.
And the other thing I wanted to mention under my report, I had talked previously that we went out for bid as required under state procurement rules for a new assessment contract. This would be currently provided through the S-PAC assessment. So that bid process is closing. We're pulling together some analysis on that. And we think the board has a role under state law to approve the assessment. So I'd like to, at a future meeting, bring forward a recommendation for you on that. So I just wanted to put that on your radar. We would include all the analysis and the bid results and so forth in your packet ahead of time. But just want to surface that as an action item in the near future.
No, thanks for the heads up. Could we also get a, as part of that, some discussion of how changing the assessment mechanism would impact the fidelity of our longitudinal analysis capabilities?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's an important feature of our decision-making.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll include that analysis.
Any questions, comments from board members? Dan on the task force or any other question for Dan? Wonderful. Well, I think that takes us to our break. So we will step away and return at 10 o'clock for Agenda Item H, which Jen Samuelson will take the lead on. So if you wouldn't mind muting your audio and your video until 10 o'clock. And if you can return at 10 o'clock sharp, we will get started then. And we'll reconvene here. It's one minute past 10. And I'll turn it over to you, Jennifer Samuelson, to provide an update on your committee.
All right. And I have to apologize, because apparently the town just showed up to do some work on the road. So I don't know how much you all could hear beeping behind me, but I'll do my best to ignore it. So thank you. So thank you. So we had a meeting back in July, and actually, the first thing I wanted to point out is we've kind of moved away from independent school rules subcommittee, and we are now the Rule Series 2200 Subcommittee because I felt it was appropriate to acknowledge the fact that we're actually looking at entire rule series, not just the rules that pertain to independent schools. So we've sort of created, brought to focus. But we had our first meeting. Tom and I were joined by Emily Simmons from Agency of Education, Millmore from Vermont's Independent Schools Association, and Sue Siglowski from the Vermont School Boards Association. And so we've kind of divided our work into, you know, what I'm referring to is Phase One and Phase Two. And Phase One work is the work that really grew out of Act 173. So these are largely the amendments that the first iteration of the Subcommittee worked on that have been submitted. There was a hearing before ICAR on July 12th, and then there were a couple of tweaks that the ICAR Committee suggested. Those changes were implemented, and we've filed the Phase One suggested changes to the rules with the Secretary of State on July 16th. So Phase One is kind of off and running. Phase Two is going to be an opportunity for the Subcommittee. And I should point out, we've also included the Vermont Superintendent's Association in this list of people attending our meetings. So going forward, I expect that we'll have some input from them as well. But the Phase Two work is going to look more largely at the entire rule series to see, you know, what changes we as a Subcommittee feel would be appropriate to change. So with regard to Phase One, where we are with that is we have four public comment hearings that have been scheduled, and the dates of those are August 26th at 12:00 p.m., September 15th at 4:00 p.m., October 20th at 4:30 p.m., and October 26th at 7:00 p.m. So again, we tried to sort of strike a variety of times to allow more participation from the public, recognizing that different people have different work schedules. And so we really tried to make this as accessible as possible so that people who want to comment on the proposed changes to, at Phase One, will be able to give us their public comment. And then as a Subcommittee, we're going to divide our work into digesting the public comment that we receive, inputting any changes that we feel are appropriate, and then also working on Phase Two work to create additional changes to the rules that we feel are appropriate. At our last meeting, we decided that what was probably going to make the most sense is I know that the Agency of Education has some changes that they would like to suggest a public comment, and I believe that Vermont Independent Schools Association also has some changes that they would like to make during public comment. So we're working on language that will be proposed probably at the first public comment hearing to give the public the opportunity to hear those suggestions, and then we'll have time to get greater feedback. So we spent our first meeting really talking about, you know, whether an issue was more of a Phase One question or a Phase Two question, and then really trying to distill things that the AOE and VISA might bring forward in public comment as changes to Phase One. Going forward, you know, we'll start moving into the Phase Two changes as well. So hopefully that wasn't too confusing. I'm happy to take any questions. Our next meeting, I believe, is scheduled for August the second, just given summer breaks and all of that.
Thanks, Jennifer. We should probably talk as a, as a full board about how we want to address. So where it gets a little bit confusing is there was a whole series of changes that were dictated by Act 173. There was a process that actually was underway and predated the formation of what's now the 2200 Series Committee, and a lot of those had to do with special education, et cetera. And then the, the committee that Jennifer now chairs was really focused on some additional amendments outside of those required under 173. So as, as we move forward here and receive public comment through the hearings and in writing, I, I want to sort of get some input from the board as how we as a board should process and react to any public comment that comes forward and how we want to monitor that. So do we want the 2200 Series Committee to take the lead on that and then report back to the full board? Or do we as a full board want to, you know, set time aside at our meetings to, to review and discuss comments to those, to those rules?
And let me just jump in, Oliver. Going forward, my thought is that there will be part in the agenda for the full board where I will report back on public comment that we've received from Phase One. Unfortunately, we had to tweak the timing of the first public comment hearing, so it will not occur until after our August full board meeting, which means that when we get to our September full board meeting, we should have two rounds of public comment that we can discuss. And so just to sort of piggyback on what you were saying, I mean, we can bring all of the comments to the full board and have a full board conversation about them, or we as a Subcommittee can kind of distill the comments and, you know, we can talk about it in a more narrow focus. And I'm, you know, open to whatever. But I think what I, what I'm envisioning is that we will have the opportunity as a board to discuss, to some degree, whatever public comments we're receiving.
That, that makes sense to me. I just want to make sure that you as a committee are prepared to be sort of the, the initial sort of gate for all public comment, which will include likely comment on subjects that weren't actually part of the original discussion in your committee, because that's, that rulemaking is broader than just that, that Subcommittee. So I, I'm personally, I'm comfortable with that, but I just want to sort of get the input from the board. So Kim, I see your hand is up.
Thanks. I was just, I am on the 2200 Series Committee, but I was thinking back to the way we navigated 2300, is it 2300 now, and 2360 and 1300? That we had had full board hear public comment to the extent people were able to sit through that portion of meetings. The, I believe Emily, maybe, and someone else had distilled into a chart broader themes and, and captured the comments in that way. And then from there, those areas that were not able to be, that jumped out as areas of needing additional attention, the Subcommittee took those three categories and went to work. So just, I'm indifferent how it goes from here, but I wanted to reflect back on the way we had done the last round.
Okay. Good. And Lyle, you had your hand up briefly.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you've set aside four different times that are making us available, you available to the public. I think that's really important, so thank you. And not knowing how it went before and how successful you all thought that was, if everyone was content with how it was, how it was done before, it would be great to do that again. But just for best use of everyone's time, I really like the idea of distilling things down to themes that we then could look at, things that come up repeatedly. Obviously, those would be the highest priority.
So, so if I, if I could suggest, under the, the heading of distillation, crystallization, we, we all as board members, we have set aside these four public meetings, public hearings, I should say, and to the extent that folks are available, it would be great if folks could be there to, you know, to listen to, to public comment in those hearings. As many people as, as we can get from the board would be great. Will, I would ask, you know, Dan, if your agency can help, if your staff can help sort of, sort of reduce those or sort of consolidate those in a, in a general themes or organize them, I should say, in a general themes, that would be really helpful, so that we have them as a full board. But I, and then Jennifer, I think your suggestion is that the 2200 Series Committee could sort of do sort of a first pass analysis at your raw comments, as well as kind of the consolidated version of the comments, and be the facilitators of discussion at a full board meeting about how we, as a full board, want to respond to any comment that we receive, and that we would set time aside at, at full board meetings for that purpose. Does that, does that make sense? Is that an efficient use of time and a good way to make sure we're all appropriately involved?
I think so. And I'm just making a note to myself that when the, the public comment hearings are all going to be, there will be an in-person component because we're now back to that. But I think primarily attendance will be virtual, you know, through this platform. But I will make sure that Maureen and Suzanne send the link to the full board so that anyone who is available who wants to attend would be able to do so. But beyond that, then, yes, I think, Dan, if we could have, you know, Emily or whomever sort of do the first pass on compiling all of the comments, and then the Subcommittee can meet to discuss how to prioritize them, and with the idea that we will then facilitate the conversation before the full board as we're receiving those comments. I think that sounds like a good roadmap to me. Tom and Kim, I don't know what your thoughts are.
That sounds, that sounds good to me. Okay.
Me as well.
Okay, good. Jenna, Tom, Lyle, and Halida, you guys are good? Dan, that works for you in the agency? Excellent. Good. Well, I think we have a, a pretty good roadmap. So, you know, back onto the non, you know, 173 rulemaking, you know, as it relates to the work that you guys are doing and hearing comment for, for both the Phase One changes, but also as you're looking at, at Phase Two, and you're thinking about Phase Two, I think it's really important I want to highlight, you know, we have on the books today Rule 2220, excuse me, 2226.8, which deals with lawful requirements relative to facilities. And that's a really important rule that I want to highlight and make sure that we keep our focus on going forward because that, that ties back to Vermont's Public Accommodations Act under Title IX, which addresses facilities such as schools and, you know, requirements around nondiscrimination in places of public facilities such as schools. So I really want to make sure that as you continue your work in your committee, that, you know, we have existing regulations on the books, and we need, in my view, we need to continue to support those, those important requirements. Any other comments? Or questions for Jennifer? Good. So as mentioned earlier, we're postponing Agenda Item I to our next meeting. That brings us to Item J, and for the Secretary to provide an update on the situation with Ripton.
Yeah, so good afternoon or good morning still. I've visited with the Superintendent Middlebury and had a call with the Superintendent White River Supervisory Union. You might remember, the Ripton folks had referred to some conversations with them. So just to understand, you know, from the Superintendent's perspective, what the context is at the moment. My thinking is that it would be helpful for the board if I produced a recommendation on this. So that's kind of how I've been operating, is sort of doing my investigation and, I'll say investigation, my review, with the idea that I would formulate a recommendation. The, just to give you just quick conclusions from my two conversations, you know, Middlebury Superintendent clearly very interested in preserving the supervisory district structure. And part of the challenge with Ripton withdrawing from that is that if Ripton were to remain or need to be assigned to a supervisory union in that immediate area, that would require the resurrection of a supervisory union structure. And it's not something the Superintendent thought would be beneficial to the work that they've already engaged in and developed as a complete system. The White River Superintendent was concerned about the geography and the distance, you know, that they're not contiguous districts. He said that their board had had some preliminary conversation about this, was getting closer to maybe enacting a sort of statement on their, their position on this, but they wouldn't do that possibly till August. At any rate, I think on the one hand, the geography, and on the other, the necessity of creating a supervisory union in the Middlebury area, that, you know, as we knew, there were some choices here to be made that aren't necessarily good ones. But I'm going to continue my review, and if that's okay with the board, I'll continue to think about formulating a recommendation for you to at least have a, something to react to in terms of your deliberations on this.
No, thank you. And, and there was another supervisory union to the south, I believe includes like Pittsford and some other districts that had written to the board some time ago and expressed pretty strong opposition. So they've made their, their perspective, I think, quite, quite clear. So the options are, as you point out, they, they seem to be very limited, and it, it sounds like you're not hearing favorable reception from the, the two sort of potential other options out there. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, and I think, well, the favorability is one aspect, but I think both of those, you know, in terms of the superintendents, both of their positions on favorability are informed by either financial analysis or just the practical operational perspective. So, you know, I'll continue that review. I just, as a quick update, just wanted to let you know that this confirms for me, you'd appreciate my sort of work on this in terms of formulating recommendations. So I'll expand my analysis and come up with some conclusions for you.
But there is a third option, is there not, for Ripton to become a supervisory district themselves?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's legally an option, whether that would be consistent with sort of the general policy approach. I mean, the board has looked at other supervisory unions that were too small, you know? But you're right, they, they certainly, that is an option available.
Okay. Kim?
That third one seems, that wasn't my question, but that third one seems nearly impossible given there were concerns regarding their ability to continue to stack their buildings. But that's neither here nor there. There can, there be, is the Middlebury District, can that be required to become an SU again, which is the exact opposite of what we was analyzing to have been efficient?
Yeah, not, it wouldn't work that way. You would basically create an SU and assign the union, the Middlebury District, to that SU. So it wouldn't impact the district's governing, the school district, the merged school districts' governing structure, other than to say it would now be part of a supervisory union and essentially as one system would now have a shared governance model with the superintendent and so forth, if that makes sense.
But that, so that is one within our authority, however inadvisable it would be.
Yeah, your, your authority over the composition of supervisory unions is long established. You know, it's an older statutory authority. It's up for the board to determine, you know, how to do that in terms of advisability. But I will, again, I'll proceed on formulating a recommendation with some analysis, so at least as a starting point for your deliberations on this.
Yeah. Okay. And if they are not able to find an acceptable home, what is the recourse there?
Well, it's really up to the board to, you're required to assign, I won't say you're required per se, but districts are required to be members of supervisory unions or be supervisory unions themselves, right? So it is essentially the board's job to, to make that assignment.
And why?
It's not a question of local acceptability or not, yeah.
I was just wondering if there, I'm trying to recall, was their divorce conditioned on finding an acceptable, I felt like there was some condition on the approval of their departure, that they would be able to find an acceptable home for their centralized services?
Yeah, again, I don't, it's not a question of them finding a home, it's a question of you assigning them to an SU. And you keep using the phrase acceptability or not, I'm not sure it's a local, you know, if that lens is a local one, or are you referring to the state boards, you know, consensus or standards or what have you. But the law would require them to be a member of a supervisory union. So with their with their now being constituted as a standalone district, that piece of work is in front of you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anything else, Kim?
Nope.
No, I just would encourage us to consider what standards we're going to apply to this because this doesn't seem to be the end of the line with people requesting such things. And while the legislation ties our hands on whether or not we can approve this despite the time we took in understanding their viability and sustainability in the in the way they were requesting to depart from that SD, I think that we need to impose whatever discipline we can on ourselves and the standards we apply to these decisions. So they'll probably be called upon again until the legislation gets fixed.
I share your concerns, Kim, and I'm going to return to them in a minute. I'm going to turn to Lyle, though, first.
Would not a fourth option be they stay right where they are?
They currently, you know, they're essentially a new district that has are not a member of a supervisory union currently. So they need to be formally assigned to one. But I think, you know, to Kim's point, perhaps the acceptability, I think, you know, my perception on this is the board would probably prefer to have locals come forward with a consensus, you know, recommendation on how to approach the issue. So you've given them some time to do that. So but but to your question, Lyle, they're not currently, they have not been formally assigned to a supervisory union at this point.
Could we formally reassign them back where they were?
Well, that's that's kind of one of the options, except technically that supervisory union no longer exists. And one of the motivations, I would argue, for forming a supervisory district is the dissolving of the supervisory union structure. And it been, and Act 46 acknowledges that the supervisory district is the preferred governance structure if it is achievable. So they achieve that. But by achieving that, they've dissolved the supervisory union. So technically, it doesn't exist anymore.
And so I want to return to Kim's point and Lyle's, I think, question where he's going here. You know, the public policy as promulgated by the General Assembly through successive acts has been quite clear around a desire to have a smaller, more streamlined form of governance at the local level. And as Dan just pointed out, you know, the preferred structure is a supervisory district. So, you know, my concern here with where, you know, things have evolved with Ripton is, you know, we have two seemingly not great options for reassignment to an SU, one of which would include the recreation of an SU, which is the exact opposite of a public policy that has been put forward by the General Assembly and reaffirmed, I might add, through successive legislation. And it seems from at least the preliminary conversations you've had, Dan, that, you know, the desires of, you know, the wishes of of Ripton, as noble as they may be within their own sort of town, have the potential to create a burden on other communities, whether financially, logistically, or otherwise. And, you know, to Kim's point about, you know, there potentially being more of these coming down down the line, we need to think about, you know, our response in situations where there is no clear consensus and existing sort of supervisory unions or other districts, you know, don't see that it's advisable or practicable or financially helpful to to take in a new district. And that leads me to that third option, you know, which is the creation of a supervisory district, which would consolidate these challenges into the hands of the community that, you know, has chosen to go down this path. So I would very much, personally, I would very much like to see that part of the part of the calculus as you're doing your analysis, if it looks like there isn't going to be consensus amongst some of the neighboring communities. Kim, you have your your hand up again.
Yeah. And if that, in following that line of thinking, if, I'm just trying to recall, the conditions under which we consider this over two meetings, inviting them to bring to us their sort of evidence of sustainability and having places where their students could go if that building, you know, if that school were no longer to exist because we had concerns about their ability to staff. And they came forward with this. So if it becomes burdensome for, and I thought that they had some verbal assurances from an SU that was willing to consider taking them. So I'm really, I apologize for not remembering the details. I just recall that being part of the conversation. So again, I guess I would also encourage the consideration of the third option because if that is not available to them in their own community as a financially viable option, then they can consider themselves to, you know, be a funding district, I guess. I don't, I don't really know, but I think to Oliver's point, placing undue burden on or recreating an SU, I can't think of anything I'd be less than supportive. And I would argue consideration of the geography to be less of an issue in a virtual world than maybe it had been. So two or three sound like, you know, options that I would really like to see explored far enough that the community that chose this path has to have some responsibility for how this comes down.
Other comments? Yep, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Halita, Jenna, Tom? Jennifer? No. Mr. Secretary?
No, no, I appreciate the feedback. I won't go into it further. I think, you know, I appreciate where the board's coming from. And I think it'll be useful to have some analysis from the agency on this to stimulate your deliberations.
Yep. Okay. Oh, Kim?
Okay, I had one more question. It's not an option to reassign them to their original school district, unified school district, even though the state board of ed did that when assigning authorities. We can't assign them to an SD without making it an SU. Is that right?
Yeah, that's, that's not assignment, that's merging, you know.
Okay.
And your ability to, yeah, your ability to merge districts is over. And
Thank you.
I will say that there, there was an article in, I think it was Vermont Digger, around Stowe area, and inaccurately reported that Ripton was part of a forced merger by the board. It was not. This was a voluntary merger, leveraging the incentives and again, the attraction of having a single district under Act 46. It was not a forced merger of the board. But the board currently does not have any authority to forcibly merge school districts. SU assignment and composition is authority you've had for a long time.
Yep. Well, with one caveat, but I would point out, you know, Ripton could if if they arrived at a point in the future where, you know, viability as, let's say, for example, if, you know, if they discovered it wasn't such a great idea to be an individual district, they could, you know, go through the process of merging back in again. But they would have to initiate that process that's under statute. The other exception, Dan, and I'm sure you know this, the board does have the ability to merge governance units, but only it's through a different process and it's through, if, through recommendation of the secretary, if there's a sort of repeated sort of finding of adherence to the EQS standards. So if a school is not, you know, sort of if a local district is not sort of meeting its requirements under the educational quality standards there, there is a process where the secretary can make a recommendation and then we could act as a board to to merge districts. I think I have that right. Correct, Dan?
Yeah, I mean, that's an area of, that's a new statutory authority that was created under 173 and hasn't yet been visited. And so I'm not as clear as to what that path would look like.
Okay. Wonderful. All righty, we will move on to the next topic, which is Agenda Item K, which circles back to some of the initial conversation. We had a secretary regarding a pupil waiting task force. So as I mentioned, Jennifer has been in some contact with at least one of the co-chairs of the task force on pupil waiting. And they are, under the law that passed this year, are required to seek input from a variety of stakeholders, including the State Board of Education. So we will be provided, we're required to be consulted and will be provided an opportunity to speak before the board. The, there was some initial communication that indicated they were looking for the the board to provide some testimony on the educational quality standards, I believe. And I think they were asking the same of the agency. I did go back and review the the meeting of, I think, June 29th, if I'm not mistaken, of the task force. And during the discussion, there was reference to inviting various stakeholders. And in the discussion, it was suggested that that the entities being consulted should consider what they felt was sort of appropriate input for the task force. So I was going to suggest that, well, we may want to touch on the educational quality standards. I would actually prefer to sort of defer to the agency, maybe to address that. I think that the agency would be better suited to address that topic. And instead, I think, I think there's a better opportunity for us as a board to talk about our role in sort of adjudicating some of these, you know, thorny issues around, you know, such as Act 46, where we, you know, we went through, you know, pretty, we facilitated a pretty rigorous public engagement process around, you know, what were some challenging issues. We also had an important role around establishing some of the standards pertaining to the application of small school grants. So I think we have some history there that we can share that may be relevant to this task force and what they're doing. And where I'm going with this is I potentially see a role for the board in the future in sort of being the arbiter of, you know, various waiting standards, which can be challenging sometimes to address in detail in other venues. So I'll just put that out. There's some initial thoughts that I have, and I want to open it up for discussion amongst the full board. So, Kim?
I guess, Oliver, and maybe I'm not understanding the context, but the waiting study itself is very dependent on all factors within this, like for its efficacy. And it's, using that study means using all the conditions under which it was generated. And so if we were to start arbitrarily weighing in on what weights belong, or even even becoming the place for people to appeal what they say the weight should be, we aren't following the science of this study. So I would very much so caution suggesting that we would have any role in that. I think those authors of the study made pretty clear, Tammy, others, that the context of the study was under the current funding system with the current sets of assumptions. And I don't think we have any role in weighing in on, no pun intended, what weight should be assigned to what factor.
Oh, just just to be clear, I wasn't suggesting we do that now. That I was suggesting at some point, way off into the distance, if if there was some sort of mechanism set up to routinely assess and adjust weights that perhaps that might be, could be a role for the board, to play a role as we have in the past with something similar.
Do you mean like if legislation were written such that every five years, the state board of ed will oversee a study process that reevaluates weights, like
Exactly.
Something like that? Okay. Not in a reaction to the current study, but rather in a proactive built into the system?
Exactly, yep.
Understood.
Other comments, questions?
So with regard to the education quality standards, my phone call that I had, you know, my understanding is that this is something that the state board owns. So I'm just trying to understand, are you basically suggesting that we shouldn't own it, we don't want to own it, that this is more within the purview of the agency of education and that we can be helpful in other ways, independent of the education quality standards?
Yeah, well, let me, yeah, great, great question. So let me kind of dissect this a little bit. So the board is responsible for promulgating the rules, the EQS rules and regulations, but it's the agency's job to sort of administer and oversee. So there's a, there's a, you know, process to sort of, you know, an assessment process, et cetera. That's not the board's responsibility, that's the agency's responsibility. And that's why I think it's better for the agency to sort of address, you know, sort of what they're seeing on the ground from an EQS perspective, because I think that's where a lot of the questions might be. But I think it's also important to note that, you know, the the task, what the task force is charged with is broader than just looking at EQS. I think, I just think that we, you know, what we've been focused on over the past few years is it has not been EQS, frankly. You know, we haven't been been looking at those rules and we certainly don't have a role in administering those rules. But Dan, I'll, it looks like you want to have something to add there.
Yeah, I was just going to add a little context for why perhaps the task force is interested in this topic. So, you know, during testimony, I've had quite a bit of interaction with with the committees on this issue of the rules because, you know, the weights, adjusting the weights doesn't provide more money to school districts. It provides basically an incentive. If you had students that cost more to educate, it provides you an incentive to spend more money to address the educational needs of those students. But the question comes up, it's like, well, what what would compel school districts to actually make those investments, you know? Because if you give them more equalized pupils, it will lower your tax rate if they're, you know, not spending more money. So what is the mechanism that actually compels them to address the issues of quality? And that's really the regulation, regulation. And so that that is kind of why this group perhaps might be interested in the topic. But then I think it's important to acknowledge that a whole separate conversation has been going on around the role of the state board and the role of the agency. And that that conversation has found a home in a required report that we are working on jointly. So I think it's in that context, I would, you know, at this point, you know, there's so many things coming out of the legislative process this year. Right now, we're just trying to find a home for some of these conversations. So I think a better part of what I'd be talking to the task force about is firstly, like, why, why, how are these things connected to weights? But then to acknowledge that the General Assembly has essentially created a space for this conversation to occur, a requirement. So we'll be engaging together, another important piece So we'll be engaging together, another important piece of work about the role of the agency, the role of the board, and how that role, how those roles play out in the construct of regulation. And one of the key intersections of the role and responsibility plays out inside the quality rules themselves. So, you know, that, those are the observations I would make from a context standpoint for the task force, just to acknowledge that, you know, one, why are we having a conversation about quality rules? And then two, to acknowledge that there is a, a process essentially that's been created to consider that.
Other comments, questions? Lyle?
So there is a Coalition for Vermont Student Equity, and I assume that they are active participants at the table along the way here within this conversation. I'm not quite sure who I'm asking that of, but maybe Dan.
Yeah, I'm unclear. At this point, I don't think the task force has really sort of started to engage stakeholder groups more broadly. My perception of their, based on their ask and talking with the co chairs, that they're still kind of getting up to speed as quickly as possible on, you know, what is in the weighting study? How does the current funding system actually work? And issues like regulation are sort of secondary touchpoints on that conversation. But it's not clear to be, to what I sent the task force will be engaging with other stakeholder groups to, you know, report.
So I, I think, and we should be mindful of, and I'll come to you here in a minute, Tom. We should be mindful of the fact that the stakeholder, excuse me, the task force is comprised of legislators from both education committees as well as the Ways and Means and Senate Finance Committee. So some, some folks have greater familiarity with the roles and responsibilities of the board versus the agency. Others may not be, you know, fully up to speed on, on some of the nuances. So that's why I think it's, it is a little, I think it's important, and at least in our first interaction with the task force, to level set on, you know, what, what the board has really been focused on over the past several years, which are, you know, you know, essentially, you know, rulemaking around 173, Act 46, and, and a lot of the work sort of, you know, sort of arbitrating some of those issues. And I think having that task force, just having a consistent understanding of what our role has been, will help sort of, you know, inform the, the conversation going forward. So Tom, and then Kim.
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of questions, and maybe it's for Dan, or maybe Jennifer, you found this out in your conversation. I raised this last meeting, but this seems to have a major impact on Act 173 and the funding there. And is that something that we should weigh in on? And is that, is there a timeline that has been coordinated with the rolling out of Act 173 requirements? My second part goes back to the Ripton conversation. And once the weighting study is implemented, that could dramatically affect, as you said, tax rates and school funding. And is there, is that part of the task force scope of work as well?
Dan, you want to take a crack at that?
Yeah. You, you impressed me with your understanding of the complexity of some of this, Tom. That's great. In terms of 173, the trajectory of the ones, the implementation of the block grant has been established, right? The rules are done. We know where that's going. So I think there is a, I think a decision point for the task force in terms of, you know, again, I, my understanding of the task force is that they're charged with making a recommendation to the General Assembly. So they're not deciding the issue themselves. They're going to make a recommendation. But there is a, there is a interconnect. Because the weighting study came out of 173, there is a policy decision around to what extent the special ed block grant should be adjusted based on any kind of weight in consideration. And there's a, more or less a recommendation, I think, in the report and the study itself, the weighting study, that points more towards not doing that and really trying to address the issue of poverty as a, I want to say, a proxy for some of the other issues. And also the qualitative research in the study, the Act 173 study from stakeholder groups and the practitioners of special education weren't convinced that the block grant needed to be adjusted at this early point of implementation. Like, there might be other vagaries involved in terms of cost structure that could be captured if, if the, the weight for poverty was addressed in the broader funding system. So my guess would be that the 173 block grant has an implementation trajectory that would be considered, but not altered by the task force as it contemplates an adjustment in the broader weighting system. Second part of your question sort of pertain to Ripton, I think, as an example. And this is where I didn't want to get into it too much, but when you were talking about option three earlier, which we will analyze more fully, but the idea of Ripton becoming its own supervisory district has to be analyzed from an operational perspective. There are significant operational considerations for doing that. One is, I mean, from a policy standpoint, I believe supervisory unions are defined as being K-12 entities. So Ripton is not a K-12 entity, so that, that inconsistency. But more to the point, when we start to think about that from an operational standpoint, special education is a responsibility of supervisory unions. That, that shift was enacted under Act 153. And then again, in Act 156 in 2012. So, you know, what are the implications from a special ed, you know, treating Ripton as a standalone supervisory district for implementing the accountability aspects of special education, the federal flow through, and then the oversight of that process? You know, it becomes operationally very challenging to consider that. But, you know, it gets to the point, again, where we have, on the one hand, we have very small units inside our governance structure, so we have very small school districts, you know? And the issue of equalization, just like any statistical process, becomes more challenging the more pieces you have and the smaller they are. Because in any given year, there are fluctuations in that model just by definition. It's like CLA, you know, if you look at CLA fluctuation, if you have a small town, your CLA, you know, is going like this because one or two sales could really throw you off. It's like any statistical sample. So we have all these micro school districts that it really becomes challenging to do equalization, you know, just because of their size. And we have tax rate at the school district level, but then we have systems and structures on accountability that put supervisory unions as the larger structure for accountability. So that's part of Act 46. It's part of Act 153, as I mentioned, with special ed. We have things that are being consolidated at the SU level, but we still have tax rates be determined at the local level. So those kinds of dynamics, you know, to, to our, I think, the earlier observation of the board, that locals really need to appreciate these complexities before making these governance decisions, you know? It's not just about controlling your school. It's about how to, having to live in this very complex structure, both from a federal and state perspective. And it's hard, I think, for locals to fully contemplate that without some real technical support doing it. But, so again, I think the observation of the task force, the work of the task force is significant, very significant. And its implications will touch many areas that are just beyond its immediate charge, which is probably prudent for the General Assembly to have given the task force the responsibility of creating a report. And then the broader deliberations will come back and spin off into lots of different places. I don't know if I answered any of your questions.
No, that, that's good. What I, the, at the root of it was, would the task force perhaps in their, in their report out have work for us to do regarding either of those two areas?
Yeah, I think, I think there's going to be, you know, particularly with the other conversation being queued up on, on the role of regulation relative to statute. And we saw the General Assembly take action this session and sort of limiting the board's role out of sort of policymaking, if you will. So I think that's a good, you know, it's a good, healthy consideration to be, you know, for policymakers to be looking at the whole system and not just a piece of it. Because I think the regulation needs, needs to flow from statute as much as possible. And that's something the board's been working to. So, yeah, I think the board, you know, again, I think the board should have a significant interest in the work of the task force. Monitor it, testify, inform it, and so forth, because the repercussions are significant for the whole system, but also for the specific role and work of the board.
Kim?
Thank you. Dan, just to, I know that Act 173, that advisory group, for the most part, said they didn't feel like they could begin to incorporate the findings of the weighting study at the time that they were expected to come up with recommendations for regulations. So I, I think that was just, as I understood it, a position they took in the context of the timeline that was available to them. And just for clarification, I mean, the weighting study is changing the equalized pupil. And remind me, 173 is based on average sharing membership, right? ADM, is that true, or is it equalized pupil?
Yeah, so a couple of issues there. I think the weighting study, or excuse me, the, the Act 173 advisory group was briefed on the weighting study. I would agree with your observation that it was like, this is significant. And, you know, considering the other work the advisory group had to take on in terms of the rules and so forth, they weren't really prepared to do much more with it. But then again, the General Assembly hasn't really queued up the conversation. I mean, this is, this action of creating a task force is really the first reaction to the weighting study the General Assembly's had. Because the pandemic sort of, I would say disrupted that, that flow a little bit. But I would expect the advisory group to weigh in at some point, particularly if the General Assembly queues up a conversation around to what extent the block grant should be adjusted, you know, for a weighting. So I think the advisory group, if, if that question is queued up, the advisory group will get into this issue. Because the advisory groups have been extended by a year as well, and by this legislative session. But in terms of your sort of technical question around the block grant, you know, the block grant is not connected to, from, from my understanding, is not connected to any count of pupils, per se. It's based on special ed cost, you know? And we use, there's a direct connection between equalized pupils and ADM. ADM is the sort of the foundational statistic that is then equalized. You know, it's averaged over two years, then equalized to determine equalized pupils. The special ed side of that doesn't use either ADM or equalized pupils. It uses what we call child count, which is the number of students that are essentially eligible for special education on IEPs and so forth. So I'd have to go back and, and look at how the block grant, it's been a while now since 2018 when the block grant was created from a technical standpoint. But I think, you know, we've looked at the modeling of implementation of the block grant and to a certain extent, some analysis of what districts are currently spending in special education. And it tried to takes the high flyers down and brings the, you know, it's sort of in the mean somewhere. So it's that kind of effect where people will be on either side of the block grant and have to figure out how to live in that construct. I don't think, you know, this issue of, should it be connected to pupil count or child count is one of the policy decisions that's before, that's raised in the weighting study. But again, I'm not, I'm not sure that question has been formulated fully yet. So it'll be interesting to see if the task force gets involved in that or leads that for the policy committees to work on in the next session.
Yeah, I, I thought, anyway, it's been a while since we've had to address 173 with that type of intention. So I, and I had thought I understood ADM to be sort of the count of the butts in the seat in October, whatever that date is.
Right, right.
And then equalized pupil is adjusted for weights that, however inadequate they are.
Takes a two-year, takes the two-year averages in ADM. So it takes a two-year average of ADM and then, then looks at the types of pupils that are there and assigns them different weights.
Yeah. And I didn't realize, I guess, in all of our looking at the rules, the construct of how the, I would have to look back a quick, I think, at the 1300, which was the funding piece that we didn't spend as much time on as a subcommittee, because that had been finished. I hadn't realized it was based, going to be adjusted based on spending versus the census struck me as number of students.
I, I could be, I'm rusty on that, so don't, don't fully quote me on this. But, yeah, I think your observation that the advisory group was charged with looking at the rules of how to implement it. The, the, the block grant itself is essentially formulaic in the statute. You know, it's not, it's not something the advisory group, you know, they could give an opinion on it, which is essentially what the, the prompt might be. But there was never a charge to examine how to, how to create the block grant to the advisory group. That essentially was formulated and enacted in law with Act 173. So I need to go back and refresh my memory. I haven't looked at those mechanics in some time.
Yeah, I think my, my thought process in it was, when I was thinking about it as already using EQS, if the weights change, the census changes. So the number, if that's what's driving the block you get by the number of students that's an equalized people count, then if something changes in the weighting study, it will back into that block and, and give you that information. If it's either based on a dollar amount or the ADM, which is unweighted, then maybe there is some consideration for changing it. And, and just in thinking purely math, I'm, I'm thinking.
Yeah.
I just couldn't remember.
Yeah, you're prompting me to go back and revisit it.
I couldn't remember.
It is important to acknowledge, because we did spend a lot of time on 173 on a improving sort of practice and the quality, that a big part of 173 is cost containment, right? So the impetus, one of the, the prompts for 173 was the idea that we were not controlling special ed costs well as a state. You know, that the reimbursement model really was incentivizing high cost. And, oh, coincidentally, also is incentivizing perhaps bad practice or a practice that was inconsistent with best practice. But it is important to start with that logic of cost containment, because that's, you know, again, which leaves me to conclude that, I'll, I'll go back and revisit it and stop commenting on it. But I, I think it is, it's, it's a cost-based idea. But the, the prompt that came out of the, the weighting study was, well, should that also be adjusted to account for the variation in number of students with disabilities on a district-by-district basis? You know, meaning that for some districts that have more students with disabilities, should the block, block grant acknowledge that? And part of the technical answer is maybe. But if the broader funding formula was working to address poverty, then there is a relationship between poverty and special education. You know, if, if that, that funding system was working better or more appropriately, what have you, that there might not be a need to adjust the block grant. And then, again, the qualitative feedback on that was that most practitioners would like, it's too early to tell if the block grant would need to be adjusted because we haven't implemented it yet, you know? So, anyway, appreciate you posing the question. I'll go back and do that for homework.
Tom?
Yeah, I could have taken my hand down, but I just want to say what, what Dan just said is really what, that summarized really well where the advisory group was. It is an ADM. I think it did deal with, with ADM because there was no, the, the weighting study hadn't even been brought before the legislature, really, for discussion. And so there was that exact conversation about whether or not, if you use ADM, it just assumes that every district has a natural distribution of students requiring special services. And that may have, that's not probably true. But that the poverty, the weight for poverty was going to take care of that in the broader system. So they left it alone, the advisory group left it alone, and, and said, it'll remain to be seen whether that needs to be revisited at a later time, once we see how it all shakes out. But Dan, I just wanted to say Dan had it exactly right in his, in his last comments.
Great, thanks. Jenna or Angelita, Lyle, any comments or questions from you guys?
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm, I'm going to try to sort of, this is how I propose to sort of, that Jen or I, depending on, or maybe both of us, I'm not sure yet. Jen and I will figure out who is going to address the, testify before the, the next committee of the, the, the task force. But what I propose we do is keep it high level, focus on providing a little bit of background on what the board has been focused on over the past few years. I think that's important. We'll speak a little bit about, you know, our role. that's important. We'll speak a little bit about, you know, our role around the educational quality standards, the rules, and that we have responsibility for, you know, promulgating those rules. But it's, it's obviously the agency's job to, and individual schools to, to administer those rules. And then I think this issue that has been raised around Act 173 and the block grant, and sort of raising that before the, the task force is something that they should be cognizant of in their deliberations is, is really important. So I would suggest that that's sort of, you know, at least our preliminary testimony for this first opportunity, and perhaps there'll be further opportunities if the, if the task force wants to, to hear more from us. And I would also add on to that, I think it's important just to note that much of our focus over the past few years has been around sort of adjudicating some of these, you know, delicate, challenging topics, whether it be Act 46, the small school waiting formula. And, you know, that the board was quite successful in, you know, managing those. And then, you know, to Dan's earlier point about, you know, the board really very clearly not having a role in developing educational policy. I think we have done a really good job over the past few years in facilitating, as a facilitator, and sort of a neutral arbiter facilitator of, you know, bringing various stakeholders together, et cetera. So I think it's important to note that as well. So, any, does that sound about right to folks? General themes to hit on? Okay. Wonderful. All righty. We'll, we'll approach it from that perspective. So that concludes item K and brings us to item L, which is around retreat planning. So I believe we have, I need to check the calendar, but I want to say that we provisionally have the 15th and 16th of September on the calendar for a retreat. Let me just double check that. I might have that wrong. Yes, 15th and 16th. So, so a couple of questions. First of all, those two days, does, does anybody foresee any challenges with either or both of those two days? Okay. I'm sensing that everybody's good with that. So at least we have two days we can work with. The second question is, is everybody comfortable meeting in person? Any, any reservations about meeting in person? Okay. I'm, I'm not hearing any reservations there. So I would suggest that we plan for a retreat in person. And that in the past pre-pandemic, typically we had half of one day focused on sort of general, you know, business regular sort of board meeting. And then the remainder of the time was really focused on, you know, more retreat-focused topics. So I'll start with that as been the past practice, any, and open it up for any discussion about sort of that as a format before we then go into the, the subjects. So we'll hold off on subjects for now and just talk about format. Does that, two days, half a day focused on general business, the rest focused, the other day and a half focused on the retreat in person? Does that make sense? Jennifer?
Just a question, and I don't even know if you would have the answer for this, but what are the chances that our new student member and our new board member will be available to join us? Because I think it'd be, I mean, in a perfect world, I think it would be helpful and beneficial for the newest members to have the opportunity to be a part of this.
I, that's a great point. I would, I don't, the, the short answer is I don't know. I have had some conversation with the governor's office. I know that they are actively soliciting applications and have received applications for, at least for the, the non-student member. I'm not sure where things stand with a student member, but I know that's something that they're, they are actively working on. So my hope would be that we would have someone in place by, by September. But that is a really good point.
I'm just, would it make sense to potentially push this out to October just to allow the greater possibility that this will all be buttoned up?
I think that's, I'm open to it. Any, any other thoughts? Show of hands. Those who'd like to stick with, with September, raise your hand. October, raise your hand.
I think.
I mean.
Do we have any sense? Oh, no, go ahead.
Angelita and then Kim.
Personally, I would prefer October because September is the first month of school. That's when, you know, I'm gonna be kind of ripped to shreds by going back five days a week with all of my classes, especially since I'm taking two AP courses next year. So preferably, I would rather have October just to give me time to get into the groove of school instead of taking two or a day off.
That's, that's a great point. The only caution I would just, let's, we are Vermont and October, Vermont, sometimes accommodation could be challenging. So I just, I, I want to throw that out there. Kim?
I was thinking October may even hopefully allow for new board members to have one or two meetings under their belt to just even have a frame of reference through fresh eyes of our practice and offer that to the conversation. They wouldn't be completely cold, but they would have an opportunity for voice in the meeting and our, and our work together. So I like the idea of October. I appreciate that caution. I don't have the solution for us on that one. But November? I don't know.
Well, we may want to, you know, if, I would suggest we would want to avoid Columbus Day weekend and either the early October or late October, not, I would suggest we stay away from mid, mid-October. So I, I'm hearing a consensus, I think, emerge around October.
Speaking selfishly, if it could be near the end of October, only because I have a number in my day job, a number of events coming up in early October.
So, so stick season is sounding. Okay. Any opposition?
Could we send out a doodle poll?
I, I was gonna suggest, well, we'll send out a doodle poll, but I'm, so we'll, we'll aim for sort of end of October then. And does two days, so half a day for the regular meeting, a day and a half for the retreat, does that sound about right to folks? I'm.
I've never done it before, so yes.
Yeah.
It sounds right to me. It all depends on, I think, what work we'll have in front of us, given all the, all the committees that are now meeting.
Yes.
This board has met, you know, from 8:30 to 4 o'clock before. And so I think it's, it's good in concept, as long as we're flexible when, when we see what kind of work we have in front of us.
Yep. And, and that brings us, I think, to the, kind of the subjects of, of the retreat. And I would expect some of that work actually will be a subject of the retreat as well. So, okay, we will, we'll organize, we'll work with Maureen and Suzanne to get a doodle poll organized and check our options for, for venues, et cetera. And we'll aim for the end of October and follow up with folks on that. So as far as, you know, the topics for the retreat, one topic in, I definitely want to make sure that we have, have some focus on is around this report we need to be, we need to make back to the General Assembly around the roles and responsibilities of the agency versus state government. So at our last meeting, you may recall, the board authorized the creation of a committee to, to focus on this. That committee is not yet met. I've, I just recently got back from vacation, but I do plan to get some meetings scheduled. At the moment, obviously Dan representing the agency is going to be part of that committee. Lyle Jepson has volunteered to, to step up. I will, and join that committee. I'll be a member of that committee. And ideally, I'd like one other member of the board to join this committee. So if you have any interest in this work, please let me know. I'd love to bring somebody else into the fold. And my thinking is that I'd like to organize some, now that, you know, people are getting through their vacations, et cetera, and the agency has had some time to decompress, I'd like to organize some meetings of this committee. And my thinking is that we can do some preliminary work that would then inform a topic of, this as a topic of discussion at the retreat. I see this as being one of the, one of the major focus areas for, for the retreat. So that, those are my initial thoughts, and I'll open it up for any other suggestions or comments. My group. Jennifer? Nope. Okay. So the other, the other topic is just sort of some strategic planning for the next year. So looking, I want to take a look at, and this sort of naturally flows out of, you know, the, the conversation around roles and responsibilities. But I think looking ahead at next year and what, you know, what we see on the horizon is likely coming before the board through statutory mandate or other mandate, looking at sort of the state of various roles that are under our purview and basically working out at least a high-level roadmap and strategic plan to guide the board's activities for, for next year. So that's the second big piece of work that I think we need to tackle at the retreat. Any, any comments or reactions to that as a suggestion?
Yeah, I think that, and John had highlighted that earlier, there's a lot, there's a lot there. So I agree that that should be a major part of our work.
And maybe a piece of that is something else John brought up a couple of different times, which is stakeholder engagement. How do we engage with parents, schools, students?
Yep.
And maybe that's a subset of the strategic plan.
No, I, I think that's, that's something on its own. I think that's, I think that's, I think that's a really important standalone. Kim?
On that, I just, I think it also should be, stakeholder engagement should be considered in the context of our roles and responsibilities. So if it's an area where we have a place in either responsibility for it, or engaging around topics where we have no authority to make change or to offer anything other than the anecdotes from those who come and speak to us is challenging. So I would just caution us to understand where that sits in the context of our roles and responsibilities and align it versus have it be in conflict. But of course, I think that's pretty important. I think I would like to see us have a deeper conversation around equity, knowing that that's happening across all the agencies of state government and hasn't been much of a conversation equity in education outside of the, where it's spoken to in law and in our regulations. That has not been updated or spoken of in any meaningful way lately. So I think we would do well to continue our conversation and learning on that together.
Okay. No, I agree. So what I've captured here for major focus areas for our retreat, roles and responsibilities, agency versus board, strategic plan for next, for the upcoming year, stakeholder, the future of stakeholder engagement and equity. Dan, from an agency perspective, is there anything that you'd like us to focus on at the retreat?
I think it would be useful to have us present our plan, you know, like sort of how we're seeing the environment. We have a fairly complex planning environment right now where we're unpacking the various initiatives in the General Assembly and intersecting that with the previous work like 173 and COVID recovery and so forth. So that, that's sort of at one level. A level above that is we're engaged in revising the state strategic plan at the cabinet level. And how those, how those two things come together, I think, are going to be really interesting. And as we start to project forward from sort of those two points, what, what are the future policy priorities? So by October, we'll be in a position to share that information. Actually, we're planning much of the, through September to reach out to stakeholder groups to just share with people how we're making sense of that and how we see the things coming together and, you know, sort of a coherence-making exercise. So I'd love to have the opportunity to present that to the board. I think that would take an hour plus conversation, maybe, or discussion.
Okay. That's good.
Do you, do you think, Dan, that that framework and that coherence that you're going to offer would help guide some of our conversations throughout the retreat, like sequencing of that being important?
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah, I don't know about that. I think you've, you know, you're, just your quick sort of coherence today is, is totally in sync, I think, with what we're trying to do. We're, we're starting from the complexity of all the parts, you know? And I think it's great to, to have the board start from its higher elevation and just try to look out that way. I think there's an intersection between the two. But I, I, I think there's, it's a natural synergy. I wouldn't worry too much about saying, well, we need to have that. I wouldn't view the agency's perspective as foundational to your work. But I think it certainly would add energy and it would help you actually get coherence because, you know, it sort of, if you, if you take our regurgitated perception of where things are going, then it's, it's prevents you from having to go back and really check, do you understand what an Act 173 block grant is or whatever? So you, you avoid the opportunity of having to do that sort of common learning. It'll, it's a good starting point, but if that makes sense. I think, I think it would be useful to have that in your agenda for the day, but I, I wouldn't restrict your trajectory to, to reacting to that.
So my, my, my thinking is that I think it would be helpful to have that upfront. I agree, may not be foundational, but it, it's helpful to have that perspective upfront and can help inform further conversation. So I would suggest as far as the sequencing of these topics that we provide the opportunity for the agency to, to, to present first, then I would suggest, I, I think the equity conversation is really important. And I think putting that sort of, that I see as something that is foundational. So I think having that be, you know, sort of front and center early in the conversation, I think, is really important. Then I think we, I would suggest then we would go to roles, the roles and responsibilities subject. And then from there, I think stakeholder engagement sort of follows from there because, you know, if we can come to some consensus around roles and responsibilities, that's a good segue into stakeholder engagement. And then the very last thing would be our strategic plan because, you know, you know, those decision points earlier on are going to help sort of inform how we. those decision points earlier on are going to help sort of inform how we, um, uh, develop our strategic plan. Does that, so that's just a suggestion. Does that sequencing make sense to the board? Kim?
I was just gonna go back and maybe it falls under the context of, um, strategic plan, but the equity, I see we may have an opportunity for another couple of hours of learning together. If we imagine that equity will be a, a substantial component of the strategic plan or any component of the strategic plan, we may have additional work to do to learn together and maybe, maybe with the help of people who know better than I, um, sort of pulling our group to know where we want that, where we feel we most need that training and, and find, uh, facilitated support for that in context of the retreat. So that may be a subset of strategic plan. It may be board learning on its own with a theme of equity. Something to that effect.
Okay. No, it's a good suggestion. Any other comments on the sequencing? So everybody, and, and we can, we'll, we'll have obviously some more time to sort of, uh, flesh this out further. What I would like to do is, is to start pulling together, um, the basic framework that, you know, we can share and, and we'll, we'll obviously have a couple more, more, uh, meetings between now and, and October. You know, to, to flesh out, um, this agenda, but this at least I think is a good starting point.
I think so.
Sounds good. Anything else, um, on the retreat? Nope. Okay.
Any thoughts as to where, like, is there a typical location or is that really up for discussion?
It's up for discussion. I think in the past, um, I've only been to one retreat, uh, that I can remember. Was that Lake Maury or where was that? What? Yep, it was. Okay. Um, and I think that's traditionally where it's been held. So, but I'm, I'm open to other suggestions and if anybody has any ideas.
We can, uh, start, start that from a scheduling standpoint and, and, uh, find, find a place for it, um, particularly that time of year.
Yep, exactly. So our, our options may be a little different, um, but, um, yeah, if you wouldn't mind, uh, Dan, exploring some options and, and perhaps, uh, we can, uh, talk through those, uh, at the next meeting. Okay. Anything else on the, um, on the retreat? Okay. Uh, so that concludes, concludes item L and brings us to item N, which is the agenda and, uh, work plan. We did talk a little bit about, um, how our, our overall response to public comment that comes forward, uh, through the 2200 series rulemaking that's in process right now. So I think we've covered that. Are there any, uh, I'll open up, are, are there any, um, topics, uh, that come to mind that board members would like to see, uh, on the next, uh, agenda? Uh, Jennifer?
Um, am I remembering correctly that we are expecting reports back from Ripton and Westminster? With regard to the work that they've done? Didn't, weren't they to appear at the August board meeting?
August or September? I can't remember honestly.
I can look very fast.
Yeah, I thought it was August as well.
Okay. And we can, uh, we'll, we'll figure that out. Obviously, we don't need to figure that out now. We can, we can work through that. Ripton and Westminster. It would be helpful though, assuming that they do need to present before, um, uh, at the August meeting, it would be helpful. If you can think about questions you may have, uh, for, uh, Ripton and Westminster, it would be good to, try to get to the extent it's possible, try to get some of those in advance that maybe we can share with the representatives from those communities so that they can, um, you know, better focus their, uh, their reports back to us. Um, Tom?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I don't know the reason why, um, item I was postponed, but I'm wondering if there's an agenda item associated with that, that.
Yes. Yeah, we do. Yeah, we postponed that until, um, uh, the next meeting. So that'll definitely be, on the agenda. And just, you know, the past practice of the board, just for newer members of the board, past practice of the board, what, in years past was that the approvals for independent schools were placed in the consent agenda along with the minutes, et cetera, and, and typically did not receive a lot of, uh, of, uh, scrutiny from the board. Uh, under prior chair, the practice has been to pull those out of the consent agenda and have them as a standalone item. And I, I think that's really important. I think that as, you know, we have a really important responsibility, uh, when we're approving schools. I, I think we, we have, uh, a duty as a board and as board members to ask questions, uh, to review documents. And, um, I, I don't think it's appropriate to just throw those in the consent agenda and approve, um, you know, in a rubber stamp fashion. So it's, I, I do think it's important that they have their own, uh, agenda item. And that we have as much material as we can in advance. We have the opportunity to review that material and, and ask questions. I'd point out, one of the things that was cited in a recent, um, auditor's report, and, and, uh, Dan, I think you're aware of this, and I, I want to, you know, prompt the agency going forward, is that, um, I think there was some evidence uncovered that, um, there were, uh, sort of adverse conditions with some schools that had not been, that the agency may have been aware of, um, that had not been shared with the board as part of, uh, the, the recommendations for approval. So, you know, part of this is I want to make sure that the, the board is fully informed of any sort of adverse, uh, issues that the agency, uh, is aware of or concerns that the agency may have that could inform, um, our deliberations and, and decisions. And, and, uh, obviously things are a little bit in, in, in a state of flux with, uh, lifting of the emergency order that now permits onsite visits, which were in, you know, during this state of emergency were, were a bit of a challenge. And that was one of the factors why the, the secretary and I agreed it would make sense to postpone this. Well, that, uh, that, that team sort of gets, uh, gets itself, uh, resituated under the, the new construct. Dan, Mr. Secretary, did you want to add anything to that at all?
No, that's, that's essentially the context, you know, where, um, the recovery work is really taking a priority right now. So we needed some time to evaluate that and, um, you know, I think the, uh, to Oliver's point, these, uh, these issues I think are, are very important ones, uh, relative to consent agenda or not. And I, I think it's, uh, I support the idea of pulling these out separately and doing that. We just need a little more time to, to work through, uh, some of sort of the post-COVID and recovery work and, uh, get our team situated to be on the ground, out in the field more. So just.
Okay. Tom, did that answer your question? Perfect. Uh, Jennifer?
Yeah, just, just to go back and clarify, I went through the minutes and it looks like, um, Ripton and Westminster are on the calendar for the September board meeting. So just wanted to clarify that I was incorrect in my recollection, but I still think it makes sense to have them come in August and maybe provide an update.
Okay. Okay, good. Um, any other, um, suggestions for, um, topics for the next, uh, month's meeting? Wonderful. Not hearing, oh, shut up.
Actually, one last thing. I was just looking through the minutes, um, from the meeting that I did miss. And there was a series of updates, um, from Secretary French. And I was wondering, are you gonna periodically gonna be cycling back through those new, um, legislation and updating where you're at, or should we just kind of ask questions as you report out?
Yeah, I think you're speaking to the legislative update, uh, piece. Yeah, well, um, I think actually a good, good place to go back sort of foundationally and look at that is when we do the retreat, because we'll, uh, when we give you sort of our sort of analysis of the different initiatives, essentially that's one of our starting points is to unpack in even more detail, uh, what the legislature has enacted and actually start to schedule that out on a project basis, you know? So, um, we'll, we'll cover all that in actually more detail, uh, at the retreat.
So, and Oliver, we discussed this earlier, but obviously I'll do another, um, update on our rule series 2200 Subcommittee.
Yeah. And I, um, I, I hope to have, uh, have the Committee on Roles and Responsibilities, uh, hopefully, which will hopefully have met by that point as well. So we should have an update by then. Um, Kim?
Yeah, Oliver, you had asked if, um, Dan and I might connect on the equity work that the agency is doing.
Yes.
And the timing wasn't working out for that to happen in advance of this meeting. So, um, I don't know if that timing works better, Dan, for it to be in August or September. Just to try and more fully understand the work that the agency has been focused on around equity. And see to what extent that's helpful for our board to understand.
Yeah, why don't we connect on that offline and, uh, we can figure that out?
I was just wondering if that, you envisioned that to be potentially August or September in terms of agendas, but.
Well, I think, you know, it's, uh, for us again, we're trying to situate everything into a coherent sort of work plan. The topic of equity has a home in several different discrete initiatives right now and several initiatives that were enacted prior to, uh, the most recent legislative session. So, um, we talked generically about it, but I think it would be more productive to, at the retreat, sort of look at it in all the different strands and entities that are involved in it. And, uh, so the board, I think, can have a conversation about what its role it might be in advancing equity.
Great.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, any last call? Anything else? Yeah, okay. Um, all righty, that brings us, um, to the end of our meeting. Obviously, uh, item number N here is the expenditure report, which is, uh, has been distributed. So unless there are any questions or comments on that, I would, uh, uh, certainly entertain a motion to adjourn. Sorry. Uh, so I think Jennifer, you've moved to adjournment. Is there a second? Kim, you've seconded. Uh, so you've moved and seconded, uh, that we adjourn. Is there any, uh, discussion? All righty, all those in favor of adjournment, please, please signify by saying aye or yes.
Aye.
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 And those opposed? All righty, the motion carries unanimously. We stand in adjournment and I, um, look forward to, uh, meeting with you all next month.
Take care.
Thank you.
Bye.
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 Bye.